Can I ask everybody to please stand so I can salute the flag?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia? Counselor Tenere Garcia? Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Recupero?
Yeah.
Counselor Vado?
Present.
Counselor DeJesus?
Present.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Here.
Counselor Vega?
Here.
And Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Yep, Counselor Judith Garcia sent me a text that she had a funeral and she'll be running late, but she claims on trying to get here. Just for the audience who want to introduce our new clerk, Cliff Cunningham, who will be handling things here for us tonight. And Mr. Casino will sit beside him and assist him on anything he might need. First order of business?
First order of business, memoriam's and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution on autism awareness. Whereas recognizing April as National Autism Awareness Month began in the United States in the 1970s to draw attention to the challenges faced by the community of individuals with autism. And whereas April 2nd is observed internationally as World Autism Awareness Day. And whereas autism is a developmental disorder typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, greatly impacting individuals of their ability to communicate and interact with others. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's National Health Statistics Report concluded the prevalence of autism spectrum disorder has risen to one in every 54 children in the United States. And whereas autism is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, but is four times more common among boys than among girls. And whereas there is no cure for autism. And whereas participation and observance at National Autism Awareness Month helps to promote awareness through education on the needs of this community. And whereas autistic individuals face difficulties in their workplace due to a lack of accessibility resources for their needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Chelsea hereby celebrates National Autism Awareness Month from April 1st through 30th, 2023, and April 2nd as Autism Awareness Day. Recognizes and commends the family members of children with autism for their sacrifices and dedication in providing the support for the special needs of children with autism. Emphasizes and raises awareness for the early intervention services to begin soon after a child is diagnosed with autism in an effort to improve potential outcomes for people with autism. Acknowledges, empowers, and supports autistic city employees through resources and necessary accommodations. Acknowledges, empowers, and supports the teachers, paraprofessionals, and other educators who possess the desire, caring, and skills necessary to teach, assist, and respond to students with special needs, including those with autism, and who work tirelessly to educate and provide high-quality programming for students with special needs enrolled in the Chelsea Public School District.
Linda Vega moves to adopt this unanimously under suspension if there are no objections. Seeing none, next order of business.
Thank you so much for this. And many of you know that this is something that's very near and dear to my heart, given that I have a child with autism. Sorry. I recently posted, I shared a memory on Facebook about Achilles and his story from very early on. Unfortunately, I was a mom that was aware and got him the resources he needed right away. And I had a parent that reached out to me this time around with that post and shared how difficult it's been for her and how challenging it is. And I remember one of the things that I highlighted is that statistically, if you get your child the services early on, it can decrease the symptoms of having autism anywhere from 30 to 80 percent. That's huge. And so I urge all parents that, you know, fear or feel that their child might be on the spectrum, don't be fearful. This is a lifestyle. There's many resources out there. Get the child, get your child the services that it needs. And you as a parent would also get so many resources. There's so many resources out there for parents as well. It's really a lifestyle with a great support system, so take advantage of it, for real. My life with my child would not be the same. He is a baby, like he's such a genius. He didn't speak in the first two and a half years of his life. And, you know, he's so smart. He can't shut up actually now. So, you know, yes, that's, that's all I say as a mother and an advocate for children with autism.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Any other speakers? Calvin Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I want to thank the maker of the motion for this here. It's another way that we clear up the stereotype and the misunderstanding about this here autism. As she stated, you know, her son has it. He, you know, if you met her son, he's a kind, gentle giant. And, you know, this awareness month gives us a sense of understanding and serving as an emotional support system, not only for the parents, but also for the caregivers of families that have that autism. And it makes us more focused in what it's all about. So, you know, a lot of months are set aside for a lot of things. And this is the month that we set aside for autism. And we get understanding and also we offer support. As you notice, our colleague got a little choked up. So we need to be able to embrace that and support that. So thank you for bringing this. And again, I know you bring it every year, but keep on keeping on. Thank you.
Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel. Any other speakers? Seeing none, next order of business.
We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the City Council for Holocaust Remembrance Day. Whereas the observance of Holocaust Remembrance Day, Yom Hashoah, in the United States of America and around the world is on April 17th through 18th, 2023. And whereas from 1933 to 1945, almost 6 million Jews were murdered in the Nazi Holocaust as part of a systematic program of genocide. And whereas millions of others considered damaged gay people, people with disabilities from so-called ethnic minorities, political and religious adversaries, and prisoners of war were also perished as victims of the Nazi regime. And whereas 1.5 million children, from newborn infants to 17-year-olds, were murdered by Nazi Germany and its collaborators. And whereas Kindertransport, children's transport, was a rescue effort which brought thousands of refugee Jewish children without their parents to safety in Great Britain. And whereas the residents of the City of Chelsea and everyone around the world should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors are never repeated. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 90th anniversary of the beginning of the genocide of European Jews and one of the darkest, most murderous moments in history. And whereas indifference to genocide cannot be tolerated. Holocaust Remembrance imposes a moral obligation to speak out. And whereas the people of the City of Chelsea should continually rededicate themselves to the principle of equal justice for all people. And whereas we remember and give thanks for those who save lives, often at risk of their own, teaching us how in the darkest night we can light a candle of hope. And whereas Jewish resistance against antisemitism and Nazi oppression occurred in every way imaginable, ranging from bold acts of defiance and altruism to armed resistance. And whereas Jewish women played a crucial role in various resistance activities as leaders of resistance groups, as well as in aid and rescue operations as couriers and fighters. And whereas Holocaust Remembrance Day, known in Hebrew as Yom Hashoah, is a day set aside for remembering the victims of the Holocaust and for reminding all Americans and people around the world of what can happen when bigotry, hatred, and indifference reign. And whereas on this Yom Hashoah, we commit ourselves to one simple act, yisgur, remember. May the souls of the victims be bound in the bond of everlasting life. And whereas internationally, Holocaust Remembrance Day is observed this year on the 27th day of the Hebrew month of Nisan, from sundown on April 17th to sundown on April 18th, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council commemorate the observance of Holocaust Remembrance Day in the City of Chelsea, April 17th through 18th, 2023. And be it further resolved that the Chelsea City Council acknowledges the theme guiding Holocaust remembrance and education in 2023 is home and belonging. The theme highlights the humanity of the victims and survivors who had their home and sense of belonging ripped from them by the perpetrators of the Holocaust. The violence of exclusion began when disinformation and hate speech that lent support to systematic injustice, discrimination, and marginalization ended with genocidal killing. The theme reminds us of our responsibility to respond with humanity to the victims of atrocity crimes, to counter hate speech, antisemitism, Holocaust distortion, and denial, and prejudice, to do all we can to prevent genocide.
Todd Taylor moves to adopt this unanimously under suspension if there are no objections. Seeing none, anybody want to speak on the matter?
Just again, Mr. President, it's a time-
You have the floor, Calvin Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a time that we honor the victims, the, those families that's left behind because of those victims, because of these horrible acts. And we just, again, we take time out and we just honor them. And we just let them know that we remember what happened. And it's not just an afterthought, but every year we come up with the, we have this time that we can just reflect and remember the family members. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the City Council for National Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas the Chelsea City Council recognizes April as National Arab American Heritage Month. And whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society, in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture. And whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas the history of Arab Americans in the United States remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. And whereas Arab-American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combatted in the forms of education and awareness. And whereas they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas that incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council acknowledges April as Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Chelsea and recognizes the contributions, cultures, and traditions made by the Arab community. And be it further resolved that the Chelsea City Council acknowledges, empowers, and supports all city employees of the Arab community and will continue to educate and raise awareness to create a diverse and peaceful City of Chelsea.
Calvin Brown moves to adopt this unanimously under suspension. Seeing no objections, anybody want to speak on the matter? Calvin Brown?
Just wanted to say, you know, again, this is another great example of minority group coming to America, being stereotyped. A lot of times we, you know, we paint a picture without even using crayons and colors, and we just come up with an image. But as the resolution speaks itself, this population has come here and made a valuable contribution to our fabric of the United States. I think that's why we have that quote, "The United States, the home of the free and the brave." We come here, we try to prepare and work hard, make an honest dollar, and do good for our family. It's a land of opportunity. A lot of folks, friends and minds of Arab, speak different languages. And we just have not truly a really understanding of them. We need to not only just read these things, but we also need to understand them, just as autism. We need to understand what we're honoring and what we have these months set aside for so we can really have more valuable of the substance that comes from it. So I wanted to again say it's a great time that we can honor these folks this month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other counselors? Next order of business?
Public speaking. Public speaking.
Anybody here for public speaking? I'll ask once again, anybody here for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, the approval of the minutes. Counsel Recupero moves to accept and file the minutes under suspension if there are no objections. Seeing none, so move. Next order?
Communications from the City Manager. We have a communication from interim City Manager Ned Keefe regarding notice of waiver intent. Dear counselors, pursuant to administrative code section 1.12.02, I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to appoint Ms. Cassidy Cohenen of Winthrop, Massachusetts, to the full time.
What's your motion?
Accept and file under suspension if there's no objection.
You don't want to read the rest of the resolution?
It's just a, it's just a notice of waivers. You can't do anything.
That's not a problem. Counsel Brown moves to accept and file the, uh, excuse me?
I'd like to speak on it briefly, on the communication.
Yeah, you can speak on it. You have the floor, Counsel.
Thank you. I understand that Ned, Mr. Keefe is the acting City Manager. And so I think this is one of those things where I feel like it's not fair to really necessarily put the blame on him. But our charter does require that, that the people that we hire are Chelsea residents. And I understand that we give out waivers for, if there's somebody that maybe meets the qualifications or they have better skills for a position. But for too long, these positions, particularly in the 911 office, have been reserved for some reason for people outside of the city. It really doesn't require like a lot of training in order to be able to do that position. It's really just a specific skill set. And it's not nothing that you could really study or whatnot. I'm a little disappointed that we bypassed not only someone that lives in the City of Chelsea, but he graduated from Chelsea High School and also speaks Spanish, where we know that that's something that lacks in that office. So while I understand that we gave, we gave a waiver to, um, to the person that we hired in Winthrop, and I'm pretty sure they're, they have the qualifications to do a magnificent job. I just, I just really have to take, I just have to say something because we continuously giving out these waivers like it's, like they're hotcakes. And we really need to keep in mind that the charter does require us to hire people that are Chelsea residents, that they get priority over anyone else. So I just wanted to make sure to be on the record in saying that. Thank you.
Counsel Recupero?
I agree with my fellow counselor. Seems like all the time we hire outside, no Chelsea people. And this resume here, from what I see, there was a Chelsea guy. And he was just as qualified as this girl. And I don't understand why they didn't choose him. Maybe this one was even more qualified. He spoke English and Spanish. I don't, and he ran a business, the same thing. Well, I can't figure out why this girl gets a waiver and this person lives in Chelsea. He still lives here. This person does not live in Chelsea. She got a waiver and she's no more than this other person. Uh, this here says the committee decided she was more qualified. So in other words, anybody that comes out, when the, the former City Manager says, whoever, even if they weren't qualified, he will train them. He will say anybody from 911, as long as it was from Chelsea, he will train them. So why didn't that person from Chelsea get an opportunity? If he wasn't that qualified, he should have been trained because he came from Chelsea. That's what the former City Manager says. But every time, I agree with her, and I don't know how the rest of us feel, but every time here, it's everybody don't come from Chelsea. Either the excuse is always, whoa, there's not enough qualified people in the city of Chelsea. There's 40,000 people in this city. How can you make a statement like that, that there's not enough qualified people in this city? There's no qualify for what you're hiring practices. Or whatever reason you don't want to hire Chelsea people, I can't figure it out. And every time, wave, wave, wave. These people are the middle class of our city. They're going to be making 50,000 or more, while the average individual in the city of Chelsea only makes 25 to 30.
30 seconds, Counselor.
Well, here's a lot, my last 30 seconds is this. It's time we stop this. It's time we hire Chelsea people, or at least give them an opportunity to work for the city of Chelsea. Don't go outside all the time.
Yes, Counselor.
So I, I agree with my fellow counselors, but I have also, I remember clearly last budget cycle, we spoke about these exact concerns while, while we had the departments in front of us. And many of the responses that we got, which also later on I went to the departments to speak to directly, is that when the job postings are put up, it, it's not, Chelsea folks are for whatever reason not applying. And so whether that is the reason or not, I would propose that maybe we look into how we are advertising the positions. And I'm not sure if maybe similar to the subcommittee that we have for tomorrow with ISD, if we can also have a subcommittee to talk about across the board when we post our positions, how we can get more into the community and ensure that these applicants who maybe are doubtful that they have the right skills know that we are willing to provide training for, for them to get those skills. That's just my proposition, if it's possible to do.
Oh, thank you. For, for the record, I worked with the 911 person, Steve, and he, and my wish was for him to run classes on a Saturday, which he did. And we got one Chelsea person to show up and participate in a class. Well, I think, I think they did, they did a lot of, they did a lot of research on it, one at a time. And he, he did train from Chelsea people. It's a little bit more than we all think or look at. But we can have a, if somebody wants to make a motion, have a conference with the 911 director. He can come and he can explain the situation.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that the only reason I brought it up was because of this situation. We did bypass a Chelsea resident that spoke Spanish.
I, I understand that. Nora Lee moves, um, yeah, makes a motion, move it to conference. Next order of business?
We have a communication received from the acting City Manager Ned Keefe regarding notice of waiver intent. Dear counselors, pursuant to administrative code section 1.12.02, I am writing to notify you that it is my intent to appoint Mr. Sean Colby of Plymouth, Massachusetts, to the part-time probationary E-911 telecommunications dispatcher position for the City of Chelsea.
I want to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, so move. Okay, next, next order?
Next order, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from the Harvard Mock Grant on Island and River Flood Resilience Project.
You want to read the communication? It's addressed to Counsel Brown?
Hi, Mr. Brown. My name is Shiv Chandra. I am a junior at Harvard studying economics with a minor in environmental science and public policy. I am reaching out about the Island and River Flood Resilience Project. My classmate and I are in a government class about climate change politics with Steve Endelbecher and Dustin Tingley. And our final project is to write a mock M.A. MVP action grant aimed at funding part of the project. We were wondering if you would be able to briefly speak to us over Zoom in the next couple of weeks? We appreciate that this is short notice, but we are looking to speak to shareholders in the project to inform how we frame and write the grant project. Thank you so much for the consideration of our request.
Should I recognize Counsel Brown?
Accept and file under suspension if there's no objection, Mr. President.
Seeing no objections, so move. You want to speak on the matter?
Um, no, I just asked that a copy be sent to the City Manager's office. Maybe the City Manager can have someone look into this and see if someone will be able. Throughout my nine to five, I'm just not able to do a lot throughout that hours.
Mm-hmm, okay. We will forward on to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have another communication?
We have a communication received from Christine Thomas of Lawrenceville LLC concerning the Homewood Suites by Hilton temporary closure. Dear Leo, this letter is to advise the Chelsea City Council of the Homewood Suites by Hilton temporary closure to make necessary repairs and improvements, including a planned expansion. This closure is expected to begin on or about May 1st, 2023, and estimated to last for 12 months. Lawrenceville LLC and Colwin Management, Inc. are focused on minimizing the impact of this temporary closure on our associates. We will offer our Homewood Suites by Hilton associates the opportunity to temporarily transfer to one of our hotels for the duration of the repairs and improvements to the property. As change can be difficult for anyone, we are striving to communicate with associates to share the current timeline, explain position and location options, and work individually with each associate on their temporary placement. During this process, we are making every effort to temporarily transfer associates as closely as possible to one of our nearby hotels. We would like to thank the council for your continued support as we work diligently to have these repairs and improvements completed in a timely manner. Please do not hesitate to contact us should you have any additional concerns.
Counsel Taylor moves to accept and file this communication under suspension. Seeing no objections, so move. Next, next communication?
We have a communication received from Joseph Sieco of the Chelsea Retirement System regarding the retirement system's cost of living adjustment. Dear Mr. Robinson, please accept this letter as a request to contact the Chelsea Retirement Board Chairman, Mr. Joseph Sieco, regarding the retirement system's cost of living adjustment for retirees at your earliest convenience.
Counsel Damali moves to accept and file a communication. Set up a conference for May 8th at 6:00 P.M.
Next order of business? We have a communication received from the Collins Group in regards to the job profile for the vacant City Manager position.
Everybody got copies of the pro forma? And actually, and actually, we're going to take a vote tonight on it so that the Collins Group can move ahead and start advertising for the position of the City Manager.
Can we have a subcommittee on it? Point of inquiry, Mr. President.
Yes.
Just, just to clarify, because I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. This, when we, we vote on it, but I thought when the Collins Group met with us, they told us that we would sit with them and we would go one by one and vote on piece by piece to make sure that we were all in agreement.
No. The Collins Group sent to each Counselor a copy. And we had said, if you had any questions or concerns, contact me and we'd go through the Collins Center.
Correct, but in public, when we had the community meeting here, the Collins Group had said that we would, they would gather information from all of us, and then we would vote on everything one by one so we can create the profile that they were used.
Well, everybody had input into this pro forma.
Correct, but it's not the process that they said that we would be undergoing. That's, that's my, that's my reservation.
Well, I understood that everyone, one was emailed to everybody. They had an opportunity to make any corrections or anything that they saw on it. And if nobody had any changes or anything, that we would vote on it tonight.
I would feel more comfortable if this went to a subcommittee meeting. I move that we move this to a subcommittee meeting.
You want a roll call? I'm over to the subcommittee?
I thought so, too.
Roll call for subcommittee?
Yes, a yes vote will send it to the subcommittee and no vote won't.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counselor Judith Garcia? Absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vado?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
No.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Seven in favor, three opposed, and one absent.
You don't have any other business?
No other business.
Any public announcements? Counsel Vado?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to speak really quickly about Mimi Graney, who was our downtown coordinator that worked here for a few years. And she has left us now to go work, I believe, in Concord. When Mimi Graney first was hired here, I was adamant against her position. And I spoke against, I spoke in favor of decreasing the budget of, by, by the amount of her salary because I thought that someone who would work in this downtown corridor should be someone from the community, someone that spoke Spanish. And I was very, I was very adamant. And I tried to do that for two years in a row. But in the time that Mimi Graney was here, she really proved me wrong. And she really did an amazing job here. And since she was here, we see art and murals around the city. There are so many more community events. The business signs on the downtown corridor, the facade program that they ran was, was mostly under her guidance. And a lot of the things that we've seen come to fruition here really was under her leadership. Furthermore, during the peak of the pandemic, it was Mimi Graney that coordinated with different nonprofits to make sure- different nonprofits to make sure that that weekly phone call that we were having, that it was happening. She coordinated. I remember calling Mimi and her going and bringing food to different people's, um, homes. So I just wanted to make sure, I don't know how her departure and the transition of her leaving us kind of went by us and we didn't really acknowledge it. Um, but I definitely don't want anyone that has committed or given so much time to our community and building us up to ever feel that we don't appreciate the work that they've done. So I just wanted to go on record to say that Mimi Graney, you will be truly missed. Thank you for the work that you did here in the community. I've learned so much from you and, um, thank you for the high bar that you sent when, that, that you set while you were here.
Thank you, Consul. Counselor Haddelberg, did you want to speak?
I was actually going to ask if we could consider scheduling a special meeting immediately after the subcommittee on this, uh, so that we can vote the profile. My main concern being the timeline we're able to work under and if it makes it possible, uh, to move it faster, whatever, uh, timeline we're on.
Yeah, we, we might have to come in one, another night this week.
We could do it immediately after the sub, if we schedule the subcommittee, then have a special meeting immediately after, it would allow us to...
Oh, we got to give a forty-eight hour notice, so, um... We'll work on that. Any other, Counselor Cooperal?
There seems to be some concern. Downstairs, there's a notice which, and the assessors, when you first come in the office, and people have addressed it to me because they don't understand exactly what that means. Uh, it's not written in Spanish, it's only written in English. It should be written in Spanish, too, but it's only put in, in English. And that notice talks about, uh, your personal property, but on there it doesn't say, it doesn't, that applies to businesses, not to people that live in the house and make, this has to do with ten thousand dollars or more. It's not addressed correctly. It has the state is setting it out. But the concern that people have, one, they can't read it because it's in English, it should be written in Spanish right next to it. And two, it doesn't really explain what ten thousand dollars mean, you know? It's for businesses, not for people. It only has to do with businesses. If you own a business and you have personal property that accumulates more than ten thousand, you have to tell them what it is because they want to tax you on it. But if it's otherwise, it does not apply to regular people that don't have businesses. And downstairs, it doesn't really explain to you exactly. It's vague. You can't see, you can't understand it, for Spanish people cannot understand it. But you can't really tell the difference of what it is. They should be more explainable to the people and easier to read in both languages.
Thank you, Consul. Any moments of silence? Counsel Brown?
Wait, I'm sorry, but for the moment of silence, I mean, this is Paul's last meeting and I, I, I think we should say goodbye to him. I just really, I know, but this is your last week. I just want to acknowledge our great, amazing city council clerk. I know we have our Cliff Cunningham big shoes to fill.
Can you get the...
Thank you, Paul Casino, for everything that you've done and the time that you've been here. It really, you're going to leave, leave a gaping hole in the city council office, but we appreciate you all and wishing you the best in your retirement.
I appreciate your, uh, comments. You're in capable hands and I want to thank each and every one of you for the courtesy you always have given me. And I hope that some of my wisdom passed off, but you can continue with your, thank you very much.
Moments of silence?
I have, uh, two. Michael Masuko, he is our deputy chief. His mother passed away and also a dear friend of Chelsea, um, her, um, significant, um, relationship other passed away. So just want to actually keep those families in prayer. I don't want to reveal that last name.
Yeah, I have a couple, actually. Buzzy Atta, Jarvis.
That's him.
Diane Masucci, John Arsenault. And the reason I'm wearing a bowtie today is my friend and mentor Mel King, uh, passed away and they asked everybody who did anything with Mel was to wear a bowtie today, even though I couldn't make it to his services because it was happening at the same time I was attending a wake here today in Chelsea.
And to all the victims of the brutal, um, mass shooting today.
Yes. Okay, John Arsenault, for some food and...